Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody. Pardon me, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, October 17th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're excited to have you here in person, or if you're tuning in, I would like to welcome our very own Denton County Commissioner, Precinct Three, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell, is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges will be led by Judge Forrest Beadle. If you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Our Father, Lord, we thank you for the power of your word and your presence over our lives. Lord, we thank you that no weapon formed against us shall prosper, for greater are you in us, who are in us than they that are in the world. We pray that every evil spirit be cast down this morning. We thank you, Lord, for this Commissioners' Court, every person that's here, Lord. Thank you for being a good, kind, loving God. Thank you for loving us, Lord, and saving us, Lord. Thank you for making ways when we didn't see no way. Lord, I lift up the nation this morning, Lord. I lift up Israel, Lord Jesus, all the citizens, Lord Jesus. I lift up all the Palestinian citizen, Lord. Lord, trouble on every side, Lord, but we're not a person with people without hope, Lord. Lord, our hope is in you, and we give you all the glory, Lord, all the honor and all the praises, Lord, because you're worthy to be praised. Lord, we don't know what's going on, but we know that you do, Lord. Lord, we can always lean and depend on you, Lord, no matter what's going on, Lord. I pray for those who provide protection for us, Lord, our police officers, our firemen, our nurses, and our doctors, Lord. Build them up, Lord, when they get torn down, strengthen them where they're weak, Lord. Thank you for being a good, kind, loving God. Thank you for looking beyond all of our faults and seeing our needs, Lord. Thank you for making ways when we didn't see no way, Lord, opening doors that have been closed in our face, closing some of those doors that need to be closed. I pray for this world today, Lord. Lord, trouble on every side, Lord, we're living in perilous times, Lord, but thank you, Lord, that we can always call on you, Lord. Lord, because you're a burden bearer and you're leaning post, Lord. Thank you for being a provider, Lord. Thank you for being water in dry places, Lord. Thank you for being food in starving lands, Lord. Thank you for being a promise keeper, Lord. Thank you for being a way maker, Lord. Thank you for being a savior, Lord. Thank you for being the lily of the valley and the bright and morning star, Lord. Thank you for all that you do for us, Lord. Lord, thank you for watching over us, Lord. We ask if you go into the schools, Lord, you know what they need there, Lord. Lord, please go into that Texas Legislature, Lord, and up in Washington, Lord. I ask if you touch each and every person that's serving today, Lord, appointed, elected, or whatever, Lord, you know what they need, Lord. Lord, let them serve your people, Lord, not themselves, Lord. Come on down to the county, Lord, and the cities, Lord. Touch us also, Lord, in the name of Jesus, you know what we need, Lord, and how we need it, Lord. Lord, we need to be uplifting your people, Lord, not stepping on them, Lord, but uplifting them, Lord. You know why we need you, Lord Jesus, in times like these, Lord. We need our anchor, Lord, in times like these, Lord. We need a friend, Lord. Lord, we need you, Lord. Come on in the room today, Lord Jesus, touch every heart, man, woman, and boy, Lord. Enlarge their resources, Lord, touch their families, Lord, you know what they need, Lord. Touch businesses, Lord Jesus, help them, Lord, in the name of Jesus. We need you, Lord Jesus, thank you for being good, kind, and loving, Lord. Thank you for looking beyond all of our faults and seeing our needs, Lord. Bless this meeting, Lord, today, Lord. I pray for Kevin, Lord Jesus, that you would continue to heal his body, Lord. I pray for Ryan, Lord. I pray for Diane and Andrew, Lord, and myself, Lord. Let us do the things that are pleasing in your eyesight, Lord Jesus. Give us wisdom and knowledge, Lord. Let us go in and among your people, Lord. Lord, not with pride, Lord, Lord, with your spirit, Lord, not with our spirit, Lord. Have your way today, Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord. Everybody that's in this courtroom, Lord, touch them right now, Lord. Build them up, Lord, you know what they need and how they need it, Lord. Lord, we ask if you continue to bless this world, save us, Lord, and fill us with your Holy Ghost, in your Son, Jesus' name, amen.
And they all said amen. All right.
Very hard act to follow. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the great state of Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. All right. Cheryl, do we have anyone registered for public comment? We do not have anyone registered for public. I didn't think we did. We're going to go ahead and move this right here. We're going to go ahead and go to item 13C. Judge Beadle is here, we'll go ahead and get his item done. And thank you, Judge, for always coming in person today. Is 13C is approval of acceptance of the fiscal year 2024 Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Diversion Direct Adult Drug Court Grant, this is for the Veterans Court, in the amount of $132,016.86, and the distribution of grant funds to be appropriate Denton County Budget Line items and any appropriate action. Judge, would you like to come speak about this while you're here? I'd love for you to come talk about this, great success of this project. The chair will move for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, go right ahead, Judge.
Thank you very much, Judge Eads. Commissioners, well, I thank you very much, first off, for taking me early, because when I leave here, I'm going back over to plea number 33 currently into the court.
All right.
Number 34 will be this afternoon. And Commissioner Eads, forgive me, I've kind of lost track of the number of folks that have gone through this program. Excuse me, Judge Eads.
It's Randy.
Yeah, Randy. But Judge Eads, I kind of forgot the number of folks that have gone through this program since this program was inceptioned back in 2012. Last count, we were over 160 veterans who have commenced to this program.
That's great.
Since its inception. And so, we are very pleased with that. Ms. Tammy Russell, of course, is our interim program manager.
Yes.
And she has done a great job in this position.
Yes, she has.
Because Lieutenant Colonel Gilmore is still on the border. He has been extended until next August.
Wow.
By the governor's office, and we continue to get reports from him, and we continue to receive reports from him as he catches things through his email that are especially related to the grants or the program. But the last thing I want to end on is our mentor program. Mr. Raymond Holder, who's a volunteer, all the mentors are volunteers. I think we're up to 15 active mentors that act as battle buddies for these veterans, and I cannot praise them enough, along with the rest of the staff, for what they have done, along with our local providers, and also the VA. Ms. Ruth Hood is our new VA Veterans Justice Outreach Specialist, and that relationship continues with our local Seabock and the Dallas and the Fort Worth VAs. But again, the mentors have been a phenomenal part of this program, and I really thank the Commissioners for your continued support of this program.
Absolutely, and I'm glad that you're here to speak about it, and maybe you can get with Dawn and our communications team, we can talk about that. I'm sure she's already taken notes about it, knowing Dawn, and we can talk about the success of this program. It's one of those things, I think it's a great mix of holding people accountable, and, but also applying grace to the situation, and so I think that's a very good program, and I'm glad to work continually. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you, Tammy. I saw Tammy at the picnic, I called her last week and told her thank you for all her good efforts.
I appreciate you doing that, sir.
Yeah, absolutely, and I saw her at the picnic, we got to connect. So, anyway, any other comments or questions, members? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Eads.
Let me try to get some of our guests in and out of here. We'll go ahead and go to item 13D. 13D is approval of a resolution finding that the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 381 Tax Incentive Agreement between Denton County, Texas, and McMaster Car Supply Company and the subject property described in the agreement met the guidelines and criteria set forth in the current Denton County Economic Incentive Policy of 2022, and the Denton County Commissioners' Court hereby formally approves and enters into the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 381 Tax Incentive Agreement, as recommended by the Denton County Economic Development Department and Denton County Commissioner, Precinct Four, and any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? We want to thank y'all for doing business with the county, and thank y'all for all y'all's good efforts in making this project become a reality, and thank you, Rena, where's Rena? She was here, there she is. So, thank you, Rena, for working on this. So, Commissioner, do you have any comments to add?
So, I can brag on these people for you.
Here we go.
My packet is not here.
Here.
Stacy's got it somewhere.
The top, right there.
Thank you. Okay, so McMaster Carr is here. Would you all like to stand up? We have Brian Kennedy, Senior Director, McGee Scanlon, Senior Director, and... This is a really great project for Denton County, and we're delighted it's in Precinct Four. It's a $220 million investment. It's actually in the Fort Worth part of Denton County, but we love it, anyway. We're going to get 550 full-time jobs at an average yearly salary of $70,000. That's 11% above the Denton County average. So, we're so delighted you all are here. Let us know if there's anything that we can do with you and for you. So, total, it's just a very, very win-win situation. So, thank you all for being here. Judge, may I ask if they have anything they'd like to say?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Do you all want to make any remarks?
Judge, we just want to thank you and Rena for all your hard work in bringing this to fruition, and we're incredibly excited to establish operations here in Denton County. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Do you want to tell the public about what the company does? I think it's a great concept.
No, sorry.
Sure. We are industrial supply company. We distribute over 700,000 industrial products to keep manufacturing operations up and running.
Perfect, good.
Very good.
That's great.
Well, thank you all for coming to Denton County. I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all. We're to get Joan an umbrella or sunscreen. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all so much. All right. Let's just go to... Item 13F, which is approval of Phase One conceptual master plan drawings and preliminary estimated probable costs for the build out of 2034 in the amount of $55,485,467, or to build out to the 2044 in the amount of $57,266,687 for the Denton County Emergency Operations Center. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Jody Gonzalez, and he's going to brief the court briefly on this.
Thank you, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you today. It's an opportunity for us to really move forward on Emergency Operations Center. As you can remember, this was a planned design back in 2018-19 that we went through and had to kind of pull back on just a little bit, but we're moving fast forward again on this project. The architect of record for this project and this programming is Architects Design Group, or ADG, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Ian Reeves, he's here with us today to answer any questions that you might have. Also, you know, to kind of recover in the past, as we had really the emergency management department, the Fire Marshal's Office was the design criteria in 2018, and what has happened since then is we have added two departments to this design and this programming, and that being, all of the departments involved now are emergency management with Public Health Department, Preparedness Division specifically, Fire Marshal Code Enforcement, and Development Services. So, those are the four departments that were part of the team that ADG worked with to create the initial Phase One of this planning and programming. And in that Phase One, I also want to recognize Mr. Dwayne Snyder, who's our Construction Management Division Manager with Construction Management, as well as Mr. Eric Gilderslie, County Project Administrator. So, through that and through those teams of departments, they've worked to provide you with this Phase One programming report, and I've also included some documents on page two of the document that I gave you, kind of want to talk about where we were in 2018 versus where we are today in 2023. So, one of the things of the cost, construction cost index, that's really changed the dynamic through COVID and through price escalation over a five-to-six-year period, we have seen a 28% increase over a five-year period in construction costs. So, when you think about what we paid for other buildings like this one, and maybe what we were looking to, is estimates to pay for the original Emergency Operations Center with only two departments in it significantly increased, specifically mainly because over a 5% per year, or a total of 28% increase over those five-year periods. So, we wanted to provide you with that detailed information. The other part of this programming, I mentioned those four departments, but I also wanted to talk about the programming of community access and joint training areas that would be part of the programming that's within this scope of work, as well as what's in the square footage that's before you in the documents, as well as the community access area, community event areas, some outdoor community areas, as well as joint training rooms. So, the joint training rooms is very important for our community and our county to be able to provide emergency responders to be able to have a place to have joint training and bring our municipalities in, and bring our county different departments in, to be able to do that joint operational training, and regional training for that matter. Page four of the documents that I provided with you are a breakdown of the three different variations that ADG provided to us, and that is square footage for year 2024, that's to build out to the exact staffing that we have today. 2034 would be to build out to staffing through 2034, projected staffing, and then 2044 is to provide some additional square footage and space for build out of projected staffing, as well as proposed other staffing needs or departmental needs that we may need to move at that time or provide space for that. The site plan for this specific project is the five acres located just to the south of this admin courthouse, so it's the property that we own just to the south of this administrative courthouse, and ADG has provided several documents here, page six of your program, with some massing of what their original programming and design would look like, and of course, today's request for you guys is to move from Phase One, which is the programming, to Phase Two, which would be schematic design. So, once we moved from Phase One, programming, and massing, we would move to Phase Two, which would be schematic design. That's where we would get a better depiction of possibly what the building would look like, what some square footage looks like in the building, what some design criterias are, and a little bit better detail of what that, and some more detailed estimated estimations of costs. We can get that cost a little bit closer during Phase Two or schematic design. Last two pages of your document are pages 13 and 14, well, correction, page 12 and 13. Page 12 of your document is a breakdown of preliminary estimated probable cost to build out 2034, and then page 13 of your document, the very last page, is preliminary estimate probable cost for build out to 2044. I would note that if we're looking at page 13, build out to 2044, you can break down the cost into three categories. So, build out of 56,000 square foot facility, finished space, $37 million. Utility grading, site development costs, about 2.3, and then project soft costs, which is your FFNE, technology services permitting, impact fees, escalation costs, because we still are escalating. So, on top of this, we still have to build this over a two-year period. So, we're looking at escalations, continued escalation, which is about $6 million, or eight, 5% to 8% annually for the next two years. So, total for, if you would, if you're considering probable cost for build out 2044, $57 million is an estimate. Again, I want to remind the court that this is simply an estimate, and that estimate could go up, it also could go down. Through Phase Two, schematic design is where you can really either make some additional cuts, or it could make some changes that would reflect a reduction in this estimated price. So, with that, I will yield to the court.
Did we hear a two-year build out? Is that what you were saying, Jody?
About an 18-month, once construction documents are complete. So, once we have full CD or construction documents from ADG, that's when we would be able to bring a contractor before you guys to hire.
What I would recommend would be that we do the 2044 build out. I think it's been consistent with our practice in the past, is trying to build out the buildings to a long-term horizon, you know, 20 years or so, as far as staffing levels.
I'll agree with that.
And, yeah, it's what we've done over the years, and that also gives us the flexibility to scale it back to, you know, as we're working through the design and the exact programming, and it gives us the flexibility to go as big as we would project as a 2044, but also allows us the flexibility as we refine the actual design. So, I would move to... Go ahead, we'll answer some questions, and I'll make a motion with a specific court order.
Since we're all, we're not talking about about $1.5 or $6 million more for the 2044, I think we need to project for the 2044 project.
Okay.
I agree, and Judge, as you well know, they're still coming to Denton County.
Correct.
We're still going.
That's right. That's right. Also, I think it's also, I will just reiterate Jody's point, that we're creating additional public space here for meeting rooms and so forth, which, because there's always a demand across the county. We know the utilization of the 2020 room here in this building, and we'll create another and we'll create another similar space across the hall with external access, I mean, across the road with external access and so forth. So I think it'll be a, it'll be a, this will not be only for Denton County employees, but for the general public as well. So it'll be a great project. So the chair will move to for approval of the Phase One Conceptual Master Plan Drawings and Preliminary Estimated Probable Costs for the build out to the two thousand forty-four in amount of fifty-seven million two hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the Emergency Operations Center. That'd be my motion. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank everybody. Thank you for the design team and all the parties and individuals that have participated in this. So thank you so much. All right, next, kind of skipping around a bit this morning. We have Kevin Edwards here on thirteen B's. We'll go to thirteen B. This is approval of the acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Diversion Direct Adult Drug Court Grant in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents and the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County Budget Line Items and any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion for approval as presented?
They'll move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of intra-departmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget amendment request one zero 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 seven zero for the Sheriff's Office Operations Division, I mean Operations Division to transfer two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars from evidence expense to boat stall rental to cover the cost of twelve months of a stall rental for the patrol boat. Item two D is approval of budgetment request one zero 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 nine zero for the magistrate court to transfer two thousand thirty-three dollars from administrative equipment to technology software services for the annual maintenance and support at the magistrate court video recording system and any appropriate actions. Thank you. Item five A is approval of the bill report. Payments from CSD Community Corrections, TAI, IP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VAT, interest, and D forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning. You are not Mr. May.
No. There are no additions, deletions this week. Recommend to approve as presented.
Perfect. We have a motion for approval. A motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of the renewal of Plainview PPM Pro Portfolio Manager Flex Software from SHI Government Solutions in amount of eighty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-two cents through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract zero eight one four one nine SHI.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of CloudFlare Services from Freeit Data Solutions Incorporated in amount of eighty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR CPO four eight six three.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, and we will pull that, and that will be reposted for next week. Let's go to item six D, approval of the purchase of the Verico Technical and Program Support Software for SHI Government Solutions in amount of eighty thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract two zero one eight zero one one zero two. Any appropriate action?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval of the award of ITV two three two seven eight zero, the sale of reclaimed asphalt pavement. This is a rap for Two Eurovia Atlantic Coast LLC. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, this is approval of authorization authorization to proceed with negotiations of Phase Two of the Emergency Operations Center. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval to declare miscellaneous vehicles and heavy equipment as surplus advertising place at online auction two three two seven eight five.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of the renewal of RFP two zero two five nine five liability insurance to USI Southwest Incorporated and authorization for Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer, to execute insurance application and related documents on behalf of Denton County.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A, approval of budgetment request one zero 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 five zero to allocate one hundred and five thousand to general fund, fund balance revenues collected from fees to assist defendants from with counseling, testing, and other services in the drug court program in the two hundred eleventh District Court, the three hundred and sixty-seventh District Court and County Criminal Court Number Five.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budgetment request one zero zero eight zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four for the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Court Grant in amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. And Tony, before you say anything, I would like to, the HR department, for the great job that y'all did with the Far County picnic on Sunday. Y'all did, it was an excellent job. I think everyone had a great time. We got wonderful feedback, and thank you for yours and y'all's departments' efforts and all the other people that y'all brought in to help the committee as a as a whole. Y'all did a great job in planning that and a great job on ordering the beautiful weather. So, thank you. Thank you. Go right ahead.
This week, we have one promotion in the county clerk's office, one new hire in the district attorney's office, one demotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in Justice of the Peace Precinct One, one new hire in Justice of the Peace Precinct Six, one new hire in juvenile probation, one promotion in juvenile probation, two new hires in the sheriff's office, four promotions in the sheriff's office, and three promotions in the tax assessor collector's office. And that's all for this week.
All right, thank you. That's a good report.
Were those some DOs that were hired by the chair?
Yes, the two new hires were both detention officers.
Thank you.
Isn't that great? All right, we're filling it up. Next is nine A, approval of the Business Associate Agreement between Denton County, Denton County Public Health, and Pocket Talk Corporation for the provision of secure instant on-demand language interpretation between English and other language and another language through the use of Pocket Talk translation technology.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item twelve A, this is approval of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four interlocal agreements for the use of the Denton County Radio Communication System for Krugerville Police Department and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-nineteen. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll skip down to thirteen E, approval of a resolution finding that the Texas Tax Code, Chapter three twelve Tax Incentive Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Drink Pack LLC and PR Three Crow Building, CLP, and the subject property described in the agreement meet the guidelines and criteria set forth in the current Denton County Economic Incentive Policy of two thousand twenty-two. The Denton County Commissioners Court hereby formally approves and enters into the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter three twelve Tax Agreement, and recommended by the Denton County Economic Development Department and Denton County Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move approval. Second.
About to sneeze. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of a contract for exhibit design services between Denton County, Texas owner and Toxie McMillan Design Associates, LLC, the designer for the Woods House Exhibit Room Design for RFP two three two seven four three in a not-to-exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars was funded to come from Hot Funds Tourism Grant, General Fund, Order Line Item zero one six eight nine one one zero five eight as requested by the and recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. The chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's proceed to item seventeen, the community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct Three.
We have a police and fire open house on Saturday in Corinth. In Flower Mount, we still have the farmer's market going on. In Flower Mount, what's the buzz about native bees, bees, I'm sorry, October the seventeenth at six thirty PM? We have a Wolf Owie, and I'm gonna go ahead and announce these October events so you can prepare yourself. October the twenty-sixth at five thirty in Flower Mount. We also have a Lakeside Five K and Family Run Day on October the twenty-eighth in Flower Mount. And we have a Dewali Celebration Festival of Lights, October the twenty-eighth at five PM in Flower Mount. In Holland Village, we have Concerts in the Park, October the twenty-first. In Lake Dallas, we have Lake Dallas Trade Days, October the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. We also have Trunk or Treat in Lake Dallas on the thirty-first. In Lewisville, we have a Neighborhood Grant Workshop on October the seventeenth at six thirty to seven thirty. We have a Chance to Hike, October the twenty-first in Lewisville from ten to twelve. And we have Birding Basic Workshop, October the twenty-first in Lewisville at Leila at ten o'clock to twelve o'clock. We have Saturday at the Cabin at Leila in Lewisville at October the twenty-first, twelve to three PM. And we also have a Fall Festival in Lewisville, October the twenty-sixth at the library. And we have a Health and Wellness Homecoming Fit and Fabulous Expo on October the twenty-eighth, nine to three, at the Hilton Garden Inn in Lewisville. Govern yourself accordingly.
I can't wait to see you at the bee event. That's what that's what I'm waiting to see.
You gonna be my date?
No.
What's all the buzz about bees?
Yeah, all right. Although we like bees, but that's okay. I want to see you there. Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, we've got a lot going on in Precinct Four as well. Today, there's a Veterans Hike from ten to two at the Clear Creek Natural Heritage Center, and it is geared to veterans. We also have tomorrow a dementia-friendly nature walk down at the Denton Civic Center from ten to eleven AM. Going a little more seasonal, we have a Haunted House, the twentieth and twenty-first in Denton at the MLK Rec Center. And also on October twenty-first, we have the Twenty-Fifth Annual Community Tree Giveaway. Trees not only beautify your your home and where you're living, but also helps to clean up our air and makes, it's an environmentally friendly thing. And I'm always happy to see Denton doing that. There is a Halloween Harvest on the twenty-first at the Denton Rec Center, and this is a family-friendly Halloween event with a costume contest, a pumpkin carving contest, carnival games, and a hayride. Want to go to that, Bobby? Hayride?
Well, maybe.
The bees can buzz around. Okay, and then.
Depends with who.
Well, some people are very picky. Okay. So in Justin, we have the Fall Cleanup Event, October twenty-first, and residents can bring their bulk trash for disposal at no cost. In Roanoke, on the twentieth, at the Hawaiian Falls in Roanoke, we're gonna have what they're calling a trunk or treat. And you can get in for free with a donation of non-perishable food items for the Roanoke Food Pantry. In Trophy Club on the twenty-first is a community-wide garage sale, and there'll be lots of good bargains out in Trophy Club. So that's all I have.
Perfect, that's great. Well, thank you, commissioners. All right, let's go to item fifteen for executive session. We have two, we will not take up items fifteen C or fifteen D's. We're gonna take up fifteen A or B today. So, the Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one B, consultation with attorney in a closed meeting when a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about a settlement offered regarding HDR Architecture Incorporated. In fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five eight one, personnel matters affecting a county advisory body, closed meeting to deliberate the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal if a member advised a body to withhold North Central Texas Workforce Board and any appropriate action. And it is nine forty-one, and we are in executive session.